Opposed, same side. Motion carries. Public Communications, none. Confident, uh, excuse me, Conflicts Disclosure, none. Motion to approve the minutes of the January twelfth meeting as presented. Thank you. Second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Motion to approve the financial statements. Thank you Larry, second?
Second.
Thank you Joel. Discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Motion to approve the claims.
So moved.
Thank you, second? Thank you Aaron. Discussion?
I don't have any.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Motion to approve leave of absence request for Amber Lesnar Assistant Track Coach.
So moved.
Thank you, second?
Second.
Thank you. Discussion?
And this is just for the track season, not for teaching?
Yep, just Assistant Track Coach.
For this season.
For this season, yep. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Motion to approve trust and agency account for National Honor Society.
So moved.
Thank you, second?
Second.
Thank you, discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Motion to approve a contract for Cindy Hagan as Special Education Paraprofessional.
So moved.
Thank you Larry, second, Mr. Luenga. Discussion?
Um, yeah Cindy comes to us from Colorado, moved here. She has thirty-five years of teaching experience, so she'll be working in the Special Ed Department, uh, one-on-one mainly. So, a lot of experience coming in. That'll be nice to have.
That's great.
Good. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Motion to approve Christian Mater as Head Golf Coach.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Luenga, second?
Second.
Thank you Joel. Discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Motion to approve Zachary Tobin as Assistant Track Coach for this season. Thank you Marty, second?
Second.
Thank you Aaron. Discussion?
He's filling in for Amber?
Yes. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Motion to approve volunteer coaches, and I believe these are all three for track, correct? Kevin Dewan-Walt, Scott Gangle, Aaron Keller.
These are the same three that we've had for four or five years now. Ever since Randy was head coach.
So moved.
Thank you Larry, second?
Second.
Thanks Aaron. Any comments? Discussion? That's alright, you're good. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Motion, uh, to accept the resignation of Lori Snaza with food service.
So moved.
Second? Thank you Aaron. Uh, discussion? We do have a nice letter, uh, that says, uh, "I, Lori Snaza, do hereby resign my position as cook for the Webster Area School, effective February eleventh, two thousand twenty-one." She did give us two weeks' notice. "I have enjoyed my time working in the kitchen with the girls and am grateful for the knowledge this job has provided me. However, an opportunity is presented itself that I feel I must pursue. I wish you all the best. Sincerely, Lori Snaza." Very nice. Appreciate, uh, all the years and work. I mean, it's, it's not an easy job. Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Motion to approve the resignation of Deb Hendrickson Administrative Assistant.
So moved.
Larry with the first, uh, Mr. Luenga with the second. "I do have a letter, uh, from, uh, Deb to the Webster Area School Board. After giving it much thought, and it was a hard decision, I have decided to retire. I have thoroughly enjoyed my years working at the school. I started my career here in nineteen seventy-one dash nineteen seventy-nine with Mrs. Tiedemann and Mr. Harbor. Left for several years and then was given the opportunity to come back in two thousand and four. I will certainly miss all the wonderful people I've gotten to know. It has been a great place to work. But after almost fifty years of working, I am looking forward to spending more time at home, at the lake, and with family in Wyoming and Wisconsin. Thank you so much. Deb Hendrickson, dated February, uh, two thousand twenty-one." As a small aside, I was in, uh, Deb's office here this week and I said, "Deb, I, I found out that you were retiring and I was surprised because I've always thought you were fifty-two." And I happened to mention to my mother that, uh, you were retiring and my mother said, "No, she's my age." And I said, "Sorry Deb. You've aged a lot better than my mother. And you can put that on TV." So, that's alright, my mom's in Florida and you can put that out on the TV too. So, Deb Hendrickson has done a great job and, uh, we will, uh, sorely miss her. She's been a fixture in that, uh, that office, you know, just as long as anybody can remember since coming back here in two thousands. She's a great lady and she'll be missed. So, any other comments?
I think it took a lot of the community by surprise because we got the robo-text or whatever it is, you know, I think it was at a ballgame or something. Everybody, "Whoa, what hap- what happened? What happened?" You know, "Where's she going? What's she doing?" And so, I was as surprised as everybody was.
Send donations to my, uh, GoFundMe account at wherever you would like from when my mother comes after me. Alright, uh, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Uh, motion to accept the Webster Area Education Association intent to negotiate.
So moved.
Thank you Larry, second?
Second.
Thank you Marty. Discussion?
I think we need to think this through. I think that, uh, I do not believe our negotiations, I think we had a successful negotiation with them last year. I think things have really went well. I think that this board appreciates our staff as much as any board ever has. But there is a breakdown between the, the staff's negotiators and the staff themselves, and I think we need to fix it. I don't know if now is the time. I don't know if, if we can, but I am not in support of continuing down the same road we've been going down. I don't know how you guys feel about it.
I'll, I'll read the letter just so we have it here. "With this letter, please consider our formal request to commence the negotiation process for the two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two fiscal year. As such, the Webster Area Education Association respectfully asks you to select dates, which would be agreeable to you for the purpose of actively negotiating with our presence being on or after April sixth, two thousand twenty-one. This allows for the legislative session to conclude, as well as allowing both negotiating part, negotiating parties time to prepare. Please contact me at your convenience with the date or dates. Thank you in advance for your time and consideration. Uh, sincerely, Randy Gangle, uh, Webster Area Educational Association President."
Are you, Joel, referencing the W A E A?
Yes.
And not?
Because it's, it's my understanding that not all teachers belong.
I don't know if this is a question I should ask, but what are the number of W A E A members and non-members?
I don't know that we can, I mean, we could probably determine that, but I don't know that, or...
You know, the bottom line is this, is that, uh, they are right now, from a legal perspective, the negotiating, uh, group that has been chosen, uh, here from that, from the, from the staff. And so as their recognized group, um, as a board, we don't really have any option, as to who we can recognize legally. Obviously, whatever the staff does, whatever the Webster Area Educational Association does, that's, that's their business. You know, what we have to do as the board and the governing body is negotiate in good faith, which I, which I, I know one hundred percent we have done. I do agree there, the communication, sometimes you feel is, uh, disjointed. Because no matter what, I, I, I feel very comfortable with the different members we've had on this board over the last, at least nine, ten years that I've been here. They are coming in and absolutely negotiating the best they can. From a position of trying to represent the taxpayers, to try to recognize the obligations of the staff, the students, it, it's a, it's a very difficult position, especially whenever you start talking about people's kids and money. Those are the two toughest jobs that we can have to talk about. So, I would hope that, you know, I think that this is the only group that we can recognize.
I, I don't know, within the legal realm, where we can be here. All I know is that something needs to change. You know, you're right, Tom. When it comes to money and kids and, and it's the staff, it's their livelihood. I mean, there's a lot of passions in the room. But I feel like we are doing everything we can by the taxpayers and for our staff. I mean, I agree, we're a hundred percent behind them. And there is such a breakdown when it comes to, once we reach an agreement, as to the information being, you know, disseminated amongst the staff. And legally, I don't know where we're at, so I would, I don't know if I can do this, but I would like to suggest, or I'd like to make a motion that we table it, until we can find out what we can do legally, or what they want to do to try to help us rectify the situation.
We can always table a motion. And technically, since we have till April sixth, I mean, we don't want to enter into negotiations, and nor does the staff or the W A E A, until you have a chance to have the legislative conclude, excuse me, the legislature conclude its session. I mean, that only makes sense. There's nothing wrong if the, if we want, if you want to make a motion, uh, to table until our March meeting, more conversations can always take place and we can readdress the issue then. If, if they're-
Clear to the staff that this is an attempt to try to bring us together.
Okay.
You mean, so rather than dealing with just the two people that we normally do, you'd want to deal with more of the staff, or?
I, I don't know that we can necessarily dictate that end of it. I think, what I would like for them to do is come back to us and say, "Here's what we can do to try to improve the process."
We definitely cannot dictate, uh, who their representatives are, no.
And I don't want to do that. I'm not, in no way, shape, or form, am I trying to do that. I'm, I'm trying to make the process better. This, to me, this is a process question, not a people question, not a-
So where do you get someone to advise you on the process?
Well, there is. That's an easy answer, Rodney Freeman.
Yep.
That's, that's his job. You know, we can send up, uh, an email, uh, to him if, if we want to table the issue. Uh, Jim, we can have you or Lori send off an email to Rodney with this exact question. Uh, I know that Rodney, if need be, can always appear telephonically or, you know, answer the question via email. Probably rather not have him drive up here. Attorneys, they charge for windshield time sometimes.
Did we not, not already ask for that question?
We did.
Yeah, I'm, I'm looking for it, yeah. A larger group of our staff, this is what I have from Rodney. If a larger group applies to the Board of Education for recognition, then you should contact the Department of Labor to have the Department of Labor hold an election to see which group carries the majority. So it's up to our teachers to fix this.
And that's where I'm trying, I mean, if they want to do that, let's let them have that option. And if they don't, well, they'll continue down the same path we've been on. So really, all we're doing is holding the process up for a month to let them decide what they want to do.
So last year was my first year and it was very easy. But when you say there's been breakdowns before, what, I mean, what are we?
Oh, I think there was a last year's negotiate, and I don't know what, can I speak freely here?
Well, so, um, you know, remember negotiations happen in executive session. So I think that, you know, the, the contents of an executive session, especially negotiations personnel, need to stay there, uh, at the same time too. There's nothing wrong because we still come out of executive session and say we've reached an agreement and we publicize our agreement in our local newspaper, you know, because that's our newspaper record, so the whole county sees it. There's nothing wrong with acknowledging that, yeah, it's okay to say last year went easy. It's also okay to say, you know, but I wish there would have been better communication. That's not, that's not breaking any violation of, uh, executives, or excuse me, breaking any violation, or a violation of any executive session rules.
You know, Aaron, I don't know, you know, if you remember, but it, it did go well and it went fairly fast, but the communication was horrible. The staff did not know.
Communication between their representatives and them?
Exactly.
Their staff.
There's two entities. We only negotiate with one entity, not the other.
But they represent.
Correct.
They only represent their entity, not both.
I think Larry's right there.
South Coast Collective bargaining?
So, I mean, bottom line is this, is when the Webster Area Educational Association, they're the recognized group, they negotiate on behalf. And when the, if there's, no matter what the numbers are, if the staff says this is our selected negotiating body, no different than any other business where they do that, they're the ones that have the authority to make the decisions. What it does come down to though is if they have issues, we're still in a small community, everybody knows everybody. Sometimes the communication or lack thereof gets back to people. I think it's a fair comment that, how do we fix that? Because we're all on the same page. We, we really are. Make the school district the strongest school district we can. Try to track the families up here. So, if the board, the bottom line is this, it's up to the staff who they present to us. If they want to present to second group, if you want to table the motion, and there's a second on it, we could do that. If the board decides to go that way. And then, no matter what, we should decide at the March meeting. Because eventually April, we will need to set, uh, our negotiating times. And this gives the staff a chance to talk about it. They have questions, they can approach their elected representatives and discuss it. Communication's always a good thing.
It is.
I guess I will go second that, Joel, and give them, if the staff has the opportunity to discuss it amongst themselves, if that's what they want to do, I'll second that.
And if they come back next month, they don't want to do anything?
Then we'll recognize it here.
Yep.
Okay. Alright, so we have a motion to table the, uh, action item F, W A E A intent to negotiate until March, uh, to give staff more time to discuss the issue. All in favor have said-
You also have a motion and a second to accept this.
Yep, I'm gonna do the motion to table though first.
Okay.
Motion to table. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. The motion's tabled, so now we do not have to up or down that motion.
Okay.
It's been tabled. Okay, moving on. Action item G, motion to declare surplus property. And, uh, just so that everybody knows, it's a small piece of real estate that I believe was an original schoolhouse again. I can give more once we get into it.
So moved.
Thanks Joel, second?
Second.
Uh, Aaron got it. Alright, so folks, what we have here is an email from Kenneth Elgash uh, to Rodney Freeman. "My client Lonnie Anderson owns the northeast quarter of," excuse me, he has the wrong legal description in his first email. "It is the south half of the northeast quarter and the north half of the southeast quarter in section twenty-six. There is a deed of approximately one point five acres deeded to the Blaine, B L A I N E, school district in nineteen twenty-four. The county school building has been removed from the property, but the debris is left as shown in the attached pictures. From our conversation, I understand that the school district can declare this property as surplus, have it appraised, and sell it to my client for no less than ninety percent of its appraised value, or the school district can sell it at public auction. My client would prefer to go to the appraisal option. Uh, my client estimates it will cost him three to five thousand dollars to clean up the old building site and fill in the hole left by the building." That is what we're talking about. And I believe, according to the information, Jim then was able to track down, uh, I, the property is actually north of the seventeen mile corner by about five miles.
It's very close to the, I believe, the Clark County border. A little bit east of, of Highway twenty-five and slightly south. And I was able to, I was able to do Google Earth and zoom in to, you can see the foundation. I believe I was in the right place.
Did you say Lonnie Anderson?
Yes.
We've done this in the past.
Yes.
I don't recall how we-
Pretty much the same mechanism. You know, once they, once there's a value placed it on, placed on the property from the appraisal, if they come in at, within that ninety percent, you transfer the quit.
Yeah, I didn't remember if we did auction or did just direct.
Because, you know, the auction unfortunately, was going by one point five acres in the middle of somebody's field. You know, it's just not, unless you're an angry neighbor, that might be interesting. But, uh, uh, it doesn't bring that much of a value. So it's usually best to the, yeah, the landowner that's there.
Just thinking in the past, we hadn't had a problem when we did it, so.
So in order to move forward, uh, on this process, we have to declare the property as surplus.
So moved.
Alright, thank you Larry. I think we actually got the motion actually.
Oh, okay.
Yep, I think we do. So now we're just, any other discussion?
What township is it?
Uh, I didn't bring my plat map with me.
Okay.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Alright. Superintendent report, Dr. Block.
First thing that I have on my, uh, my list is not actually on yours. Um, next week is, uh, February fifteenth through the nineteenth is South Coast School Board Recognition, Recognition Week. And so, we're gonna recognize you folks for serving, um, sometimes in these saint, thankless situations, but we certainly appreciate what you do on a regular basis for us. Um, Jen Witt made some, I think, apple bars, and Mr. Cage just put it in the oven for a while, so we've got some warm apple bars for you guys to enjoy. The folks that have been on our board, or currently on our board, this is what we've got. Tom Sanus, nine years, Joel's shoemaker, six years. Tom Santis, nine years, Joel Schumaker, six years, Larry Jereba, five years, Martin Loanga, two years, and Aaron Gakowski, he's in his first year. And so, you guys are responsible for setting a vision and goals for the district and strive to provide a quality education for all of our students. It is our goal as a, as a team to hire the best teachers and the best staff to make our school the best that we can, so. You guys serve as a link between the school and the community members and work tirelessly, tirelessly for our students, staff, and community. And thank you for your service, so. There's your recognition. We could print out some certificates if you'd like us to. I think Lori said they use the N- level.
Save the tribal...
I would locate them in your office, I would.
But anyway, seriously, thank you guys for, for what you do. I think public service is, is a challenging job, regardless of what level it's on. And so, we appreciate what you're, you're willing to do by serving in this capacity. The next thing that I have on the agenda is the calendar. I just wanted to note that during the week of... During the week of October 11th through the 15th, we already approved this calendar, and it was afterwards that I realized or learned that we had in-service on the 15th. So, that week technically, right now, as the calendar is approved with that in-service in there, is a three-day week for the students. It is still a four-day week for the staff. I didn't know if anybody wanted to change anything or do anything with that or see how it goes. We have had snow days prior to the 15th, the week over. The last two years, I, I don't want to jinx this and say that you...
Jim, you're out.
...make up a snow day that week, but at any rate, I just wanted you to be aware of it so that it didn't show up. You know, we get into closer that week next year and everybody goes, what's, you know, we got a three-day week. So, we can do something to amend the calendar next month or something like that, but I just wanted you folks to be aware of it, so.
So one...
I suppose we, I suppose we could go to school four days after, we can give back state wrestling.
Okay, you can do whatever you want, Joel.
One day in service?
On Monday is Native American Day, and so we wouldn't have school Monday, the 11th, and then we have in-service now on the 15th. So, the students would be in school on the 12th, 13th, and 14th, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, so.
I'm confident there will be no complaints from the students for those three days.
Yeah, I don't know.
Two, three-day weekends?
We're not gonna ask Chase for his... So I mean...
We, we don't have to do anything tonight.
I don't have it as an action item, but if you'd like to amend the calendar, we can put it out, put it on the agenda next month and make amendments as you...
Tom made the comment that got us here. This was the fastest calendar we've ever approved at Webster School.
I did make that comment.
Yep.
That was me.
There you go.
And if it snows before October 15th, I'm gonna blame that one on you, too.
Yeah. Any other questions or comments regarding the calendar that I need to make note of before next month? Okay. The next thing I have on here is, tomorrow night is, is our parent-teacher conferences. We usually don't have a large, a large group of people come in for conferences. The elementary doesn't buy appointment, and our secondary is, is still dropping, but we've, I had sent out a message, I pushed one out through the, the system to encourage parents to contact teachers. And then we also did the same thing, and our staff need to encourage them to contact parents so that we hopefully have a little bit higher connection rate in the, in the spring for the secondary level. We go until eight, teachers are here, it's contract day. So, even if they don't have a lot of current visitors, they're still here, they can work in their classrooms. Here's some other things if, if there's not a lot of attendance. On Friday, we have in-service, there's two different trainings that are going on. The pre-K through sixth grade is doing behavioral management strategies for students. And then, the seventh through 12th is doing what's called youth mental health first aid. And that's, that's to help our staff identify students who maybe have suicidal thoughts, self-harm type thoughts, as well as maybe significant things that have occurred in their lives that maybe aren't as serious as suicide, but you can, you can notice, you know, maybe some needs and issues that they have to deal with. That's what's on Friday. The next thing that I have on here is just to briefly mention the vacant positions. We have advertised the seventh through, the seven through 12th art position. Title I instructor, Title I para. Mr. Case is, is allowing the opportunity for folks with the Title I in-house to express any interest. And so, if there's none there and we choose to, to go elsewhere, then we'll be advertising that outside in the very near future. We do have a food service position open. We have a couple of applicants for that right now, so we're gonna, Lori and I can actually have a, be meeting with some folks within the next day or two. And then the business office administrative assistant, that's been advertised. We do have several applicants for that, and we'll move forward with that as well. The next thing that I have... Oh, I missed something. You guys don't have this on yours, but I wanted to mention the athletic attendance. As you know, from a push notice, Mr. Mines had noted that we are kind of open in tier one with, with attendance. Kinda did that, he and I discussed. We also had a, kind of a review as to what other schools are doing. Most of them that have any sort of limitations are still doing like six tickets per person or four tickets per person. But like Redfield, Roncalli, Sisseton, and TZ, they are all allowing, attendance is not limited, but they're requiring masks now. I don't know how they're requiring masks going. And Millbank is allowing four to six tickets depending on the event, but all of their students can come, so there's no limitation on the student body. And so, and, yeah, grade six through 12 for Groton is open. So, Mr. Mines and I decided, let's just try to do it open, see what our attendance is like. If it looks like our crowds are gonna be a little bit larger than what we were hoping for when you talked about that 35 to 40% capacity, then we would maybe review it again. So that's where we're at with that. Any questions or comments regarding the attendance? If you recall, you guys just kinda said, you guys have the authority, Mr. Mines and myself, when we review it, look at the facility. I'll mention the prom here in just a minute. We're looking at capacity is what we're basing our numbers on when we, when we try to limit it. The other thing I wanted to mention was football conferences. Mr. Mines provided some information to me. We actually have been approached by ECC, the Eastern Patrol Conference. There are enough schools that have been in the ECC and then come back out that are going to 11 men. So, there's been a proposal for Webster to join the ECC for an 11-man portion of that conference. And so, Mr. Mines said, you know, we, we really had a good experience being in the ECC when we were nine men. And so he expressed interest in it, and it turns out, I think there will be four, four 11-man teams in the ECC that can vie for a conference championship, 11 men in the ECC. And then they'll still have their nine-man ECC. We did similar thing with, with the NEC, except it wasn't nine men versus 11 men. It was, well, yeah, we did do nine men and 11 men. But we also did a kind of a, the large school 11A and 11B conference championships there for a couple of years.
Does it say on there who from the ECC went up to 11 men?
Um, yes. It's a long email here, so. Dakota Hills, Dual, Clark, Willow Lake, and Webster would be the, I believe those would be the four teams.
Dakota Hills, Clark, Willow Lake, Webster, and who?
Dual.
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 And then, Mr. Mines, no, I'm gonna say this because he wrote it here, but this will probably be one of those things that come back to, to haunt us. He says, "We now know seven of our opponents." And then, the eighth one, we won't... Yeah, we play eight games. It looks like we'll play Roncalli, Dual, Clark, Willow Lake, Redfield, Groton, Mowbridge, and Dakota Hills. And then, they're most likely, will probably put us with either Sisseton or Millbank for that eighth game, because it just gets to be too far a distance and probably too challenging to schedule another 11B school elsewhere. So it's...
So they're already in our schedule, those teams?
He doesn't know if we would get stuck with Sisseton or Millbank. He actually said, he, he said it's possibly, we may end up going farther away, something like a Fland, if we were to play a 11B. At any rate, there's just some things going on with football that I think people like to know about it. It's not that you have to know, it's not a board decision, but it's just information.
Oh, it is good to know, yeah.
So, the third thing that I have on that particular line is, is the prom. We had some superintendent ask us what we're doing with the prom. And out of the 10 schools that replied to that particular email last week, seven of them right now are planning to do something normal for their prom. They plan to have a grand march, let the kids dance, and do some things, but they're, you know, it's still too early to make a full decision. Two of the very large districts, Watertown and Aberdeen, are looking at a grand march only, they won't do the dance part. And then there was one other school, similar in size to us, that said, "It's possible we may go with just the grand march." So, we haven't talked about it as a board. I will tell you that our two advisors, Tammy Block and Amy Miller, are hoping that we go forward with some sort of a prom and, and provide some sort of a, an activity for the kids, but it's something that we really should discuss. Part of the, the argument that we have for, for moving forward with it is if we're having basketball and wrestling and volleyball and everything else, you know, is prom a dangerous thing to do? I don't, I don't know if it's any more dangerous than those other activities, so. Not asking for your thoughts right now, but just something to think about, we can discuss it. I'm sure we will discuss it more as we get closer, but right now, I would say that my thought as an administrator is that we'd probably move forward with it cautiously and just see how things go.
Where are we at on our staff vaccinations?
Nowhere right now. We're still waiting to hear from Sanford Health. The last contact that I had with Evelyn was about Evelyn Christensen, is the person that I've been coordinating with, or corresponding with. It was two Fridays ago, I think she said it's, you're still looking at three to four weeks, so. Maybe next week, maybe the week after. We have a, when we include the, the volunteer coaches, which we can do that as well, and we include the bus drivers, I didn't have the bus drivers on my list, there is, you know, wait a minute. Of course, some of them probably have already been vaccinated because they're older. But when we add the, the last few groups that, that I didn't have on the initial list, you know, we're pushing 115 people total on our, our list. And I would say we're, we're at least at 65, 70 that will be getting vaccinated that are definitely vaccinated, so. We're just waiting to hear. I have the list ready to go. But, yeah, that's a good question. I get that question every now and then for the staff, so. Okay. The legislative review, the only thing that I really, there's only one particular... Find it now that I want it. The only Senate bill that, that's been, I guess, concerning for the, the educational lobbyists is Senate Bill 177. And they're, they're calling it the homeschool bill. It's got some interesting information in it. There, there's some, some fairness issues according to our lobbyists. Things like, you know, they're not gonna require homeschool students to, to, to submit birth certificates, but the school has to. The biggest issue I think that's gonna come out of this, if it goes forward, is the participation by homeschool. Just to provide you guys a little bit of a, a review of what we do, our policy says that if you want to participate in Band Inquire, you need to come to Band Inquire. That's the only requirement for those activities. But if you want to be in athletics, you need to be in at least two classes in our facility in order to be able to participate. We pretty much don't allow homeschoolers to go to the prom or, or attend assemblies or do those types of things. You know, I, there's just, there's always gonna be something that could come up that we may not have in black and white, and you have to make a determination. But what this would say is that the parents would contact the school and let them know if their child is eligible, you know, by eligibility standards. Well, they just feel like there's no accountability whatsoever if that's in place. And that's just one of the items within this, this particular Senate bill. It did make it out of committee, there is going to be a hearing, it was supposed to have a hearing yesterday, and actually, that's, it's gonna happen tomorrow, but that's the only one that's been kind of controversial, that's really not sitting well with the educational lobbyists, so. And we, we'll just keep watching it and, and contacting our legislators. I did contact our legislators about one other bill, I don't recall what it was, but I did get response from... Well, actually, I only contacted one legislator because it was a Senate bill. I didn't contact the other two legislators. And I did get a response. I don't know if you guys have been keeping up with anything. We normally get a list, and there's just, there's really not anything that's too alarming right now. Most of the educational bills are dealing with whether or not there's gonna be a liability on schools for, you know, if somebody catches COVID and they think they got it at school. What you do for staffing when it comes to leave, different things like that. Oh, there's, it really isn't anything, it's, it's kinda to clean up the language and take care of issues in dealing with COVID, with the financial, the budgets, and safety, so. Let me see if that's on hand. There's double checking notes here.
We were thinking, can I ask a question? If we do Calawta Prom, are we gonna have a spring concerts?
Right now, we're planning the cabaret. The spring concerts, middle school, high school's not a big issue. That's what we're gonna do, is go with the cabaret versus the spring concert. But when you try to do the spring concert with the elementary, we would have to, and we can't do this. We would have to split them because we just have too many parents and grandparents show up.
I mean, I think that question's gonna come along at some point. That's why I just asked.
So I, have you guys talked about recording them or doing anything differently than we did in the fall?
No, you know what, we, we just recorded them in the fall and then put them out. So we haven't really talked about what we're gonna do in the spring yet, but, you know, that's an option where we could split them up. But then you're looking at, you know, a couple of nights versus one. The other option that some schools do is they do it during the school day.
Sure.
If that's another option, we could do that. So, no, we haven't discussed it yet. We'll talk about it and see. Any ideas or suggestions you guys might have, let me know.
Good.
I believe that's all I have for that part.
Principal report, Mr. Case.
Dr. Block did a wonderful job. He covered it all, so I don't have anything else to share, yeah.
Okay. All right, next, NESC.
There was, I got two things here. One of them, they talked about the CARES Act money and what they're gonna do with it. If they're gonna give it as bonuses, there's a little bit left over. They said if they did give it out as bonuses, it'd be $2.75 an employee. But it was brought up, how much is COVID gonna keep costing us? We don't know how much we're gonna spend more yet, so it wouldn't make any sense to, to hand the money out when we don't know how much expense we've got coming yet. So they tabled it, they didn't do anything with it, and it's not decided, and they're more or less moving it along to State Committee on Negotiations. And then, also, they, the other thing is they hired a new director, and I, off the top of my head, I can't remember, I was a... Armor?
No.
Andrea Powell is her name. She is currently the, she's a shared superintendent between Armor School and Trippdale.
So they got a new director hired. Those are the two main things.
I had on there that they also hired a school psychologist, but historically, we've always been a little short-suited and we're short-staffed in, in the psychology department, and so that's, I'm not sure if they found somebody, and it just kinda fell into place. But that was, it sounds like it was a, a positive admission.
That's good.
To talk about the load that we, we have with that school psychologist.
Did they have a lot of candidates for the director position?
You know, I, I don't know the details. I, I do believe that they had eight to 10 candidates and interviewed four, three, four. Salary is, I, I'm just going to be honest, it was shocking to me.
Me too.
The salary, uh, Derry Aubrey, I don't know. He must have made somewhere just under $100,000.
He made a hundred?
He made a hundred.
Because that was his goal, to get to a hundred. So, he, he got it the last two years.
And he had single health insurance in this gal. The range was 105 to 115, and they went to 125. In lieu of health insurance.
Oh, she didn't?
No, she did not take health insurance. However, if, if they would have stopped at 115 and gave her health insurance, she would have cost him $140,000.
Right.
So, needless to say, I think that there was a little bit of surprise amongst the superintendents within the co-op queue. I, it, it could potentially, I'm going to look at Lori. It could potentially affect our assessments.
Oh, well.
I, I don't know how it can't, but, um, so. But we look forward to it. Yeah, it's, it sounds like she, she really did a nice job interviewing. She's a great person.
Good.
Has a lot of futuristic goals and things, so I, I guess I look forward to her.
Okay. Thank you, Marty. Buildings and grounds?
The first thing I have on here, I didn't have this bullet point, but it was something that I remembered later on. We did have the, the retaining wall, budgeted to have it repaired. And I did contact a contractor that could do something. Did give me a quote and it fits within our budget. However, he was not able to do it in the fall. And so, I didn't do anything with it. I'm just curious if you guys want to move forward with that? If, if it fits into any other project? And the reason I say that is I, I, he said he could probably get to it this summer. So, it's, there's a chance that we can maybe get it done during this school year's budget versus, you know, after July 1 or something. But I thought, you know, it is February and people are planning things. If I, if I need to get him on the phone and say, yep, we want to go forward, I probably should do that sooner than later, just per his scheduling. And it might be too late already, but he couldn't do it in the fall anyway.
And it's this retaining wall right over here?
Yeah. So, I, I just wanted you to be aware of it, that we did have it in the budget. We've got some plans in place, we could move forward with it. But I, I just need to get something scheduled.
You know, I gotta be honest with you. I mean, if we could, you made it how many years with the boiler? We could make it one year with the retaining wall. I mean, I, I'd almost rather just see where it takes us, just one more year and maybe get a little bit more of a comprehensive plan on, on everything at once. I don't know, I just... I, I get it, it could happen, but worst case, we just don't park for a while and put up some construction or, uh, do not cross tape and...
What kind of dollars are we talking roughly?
We budgeted $25.
Yeah, it's approximately that.
Twenty-five, that's what I'm saying. We budgeted $25.
Yeah. The installation of that particular wall in 2005 was that price, so.
Yeah.
That was $24,999.
You know, there's really no safety hazard if the wall were to fail. It's, it's just going to fall down in the asphalt there.
Unless somebody were right beside it. I mean, that, I can't imagine, well, I don't know.
I, I'm not a structural engineer. I don't see it being a landslide, you know? I, I, I would roll with, let's just see where we're at and see what we're budgeting. I mean, we're already this far into next year's budget. I'd, I'd rather roll into, into the next year. That's my guess.
Nothing's going to be done for a few months anyway, by the schedules.
So then, you're good with that?
Yeah.
All right. The next thing that I have is, I'm pointing to Chase because I, I wanted to give him a heads up. I'm going to go turn the Pobecan board on, but I want to thank Chase Schumaker for putting together a video for us. He recorded me down in the, I'm going to make Mike, Mike move here. He recorded me down in the boiler room and down in the locker rooms.
So, you're going to play it through the camera, will you?
And he's going to copy it.
Okay.
Can I just go YouTube?
Yeah, it's on there. Do Webster High School boilers, the search.
Helped yourself to an apple, though. Only waited, didn't bring any popcorn.
The video is, this is on YouTube if you want to view it at any time.
Here we go. Shows up right on the top, maximize and hopefully get some volume here. Of course, we're not getting any speakers. Oh, it's muted on. Okay, I'll go back to the beginning now. I apologize for the volume.
We do have a small boiler located right here. This was purchased, uh, a split and upgraded. We have this as a backup, I know. It can't buy enough for our building. So, it doesn't freeze, but it's, it doesn't have the acid to make it comfortable for, you know, everyday operations. So, it is not currently hooked up. It's just something that we purchased for a few thousand dollars, uh, about, I think, 10 years ago, just as a backup. Because we continue to have issues with the larger boiler system. Most of our piping is in this area, the boiler room. Uh, there are large pipes that take hot water to the high school, the middle school, and to the vocational wing of the career ticket building. It's important to note that we have to heat the water in this large boiler to a steam level. The reason we have to do that is because the vocational wing has steam heat. So, we're heating water to a much higher temperature, um, for all of our facilities. But it's only being used in about one-fourth of the square footage of our facility. If you have one situation up here, not sure if you'll be able to see it. We may have to take a photo of it. But there's a, a pipe without insulation just to the left of the two yellow marks on the white pipe. You see a small clamp. That is a clamp that is covering up a P-hole or a P-sized hole on a, a hot water return or a steam return from the vocational building. Unfortunately, we have several of those throughout the building where we know there are leaks. You can take it to the other side of the boiler. This shows you a little bit of the floor and the concrete and foundation issues that we're facing in this basement area. Again, we don't know the exact date of this foundational area, but it's either from the early elementary school, which was in the late 1800s, or it was probably put in place in the early 1900s, around 1920 with the old housing building. The old high school building was actually farther south, so it's most likely from the original elementary building. We got the boiler from different directions here. This is the old coal chute. This actually, uh, comes out in front of the, the garages, out by the, the ad shop. And this is where, back in the day when they were coal, they would bring coal down in. Again, it's another point that we've got down in this, this basement area. The bike back to this area is kind of dark. But this is another storage area. It was at one time part of the boiler area. I'm guessing it probably stored coal in here originally for the, the original building. I wanted to provide a little bit of information about the other heating portions of our system. This is, uh, air handling unit that heats the resting room. So, we're kind of up, uh, up higher than the stage. The lighting, if you look past there, is actually the stage lighting above the stage. So, this unit is used, um, the wrestlers like to use it when they like to make them look armored in the resting room. So, this is a functioning unit here. There are two other units that I want to show you. One is still functioning. The other one is hasn't been used for many, many years. This utility right here goes up, up here as well. We're actually on the east side of the resting room, on the main floor of the resting room. This is a unit that has been vacated for many, many years. Uh, already abandoned, actually, here from 1986. This unit does not need to be used. There is a time period here. We can have a wrestler this, uh, here that does, uh, act for the steam portion of the vocational building. And this Italian room is actually directly above the one that we were just showing you. Uh, that was on the basement floor. The locker rooms are, this is just opposite to the fax room and the, uh, CTE wing. This unit is one that we do continue to use. Uh, it helps heat the old music room, which is now the, the weight room for wrestling. And then some other rooms on the, uh, on the vocational wing, probably the, the wood shop. It's still functioning. This is an example of some of the challenges that we face with the, the pipe system and the career ticket wing, the old vocational wing. This particular pipe has led us where the connection is, where the hallways. We have had it repaired. But this particularly, we believe, was the cause of, um, the, the loss of water. We were having to fill the boiler, um, almost every morning for several weeks. And we believe this is what it was since we had it here. Um, the boiler is not immediately refilled. It has monsters, so no other issues or, it's in some, some water.
Those photos are the crawl space. If you go through the, the old music room, weight room, it's crawl space going to north and to, to the east underneath, uh, some of the classrooms and vocational wing. I think Chase did a great job.
Nice job.
I guess, oh, going to basketball. Lori, you want to click that off or? Just use the mouse.
Otherwise Joel will watch TV the whole time. He wants his attention back, Lori.
Hey, I took notes during the last, uh, video.
We're, we're over here. Mike gave me his notes.
One thing that I found interesting, Jim, was we're heating water to steam, to a steam temperature for the vocational wing only. You know, the rest of the buildings don't need the steam or don't use steam to heat.
I'm not a mechanical engineer, but I believe that's what we're doing because I'm not aware of any other smaller boiler that takes, you know, the boiler water to a higher level. It's possible that exists somewhere, but I don't know where.
So, so just to continue my point, you know, that's approximately a quarter of our facilities. We're probably only using 50% of the CTE wing right now. That's a part of it, storage, a lot of hallways, you know, a lot of space that is not being constructively used. So, what are we spending to utilize 10 or 20%? Of that building, so.
Well, I appreciate Mike providing me, uh, if you're going to go to YouTube, it's the 2021 Webster Area High School Boiler Video is what you want, I understand. Type in to your search bar and you'll be able to find that. And it's just interesting because we see this nice library, we see the nice classrooms, we see the nice gym, you know, et cetera. But the inner workings of this school, without that, we don't have anything. And so, thanks for taking the time to help put a little bit of an educational video out there, Chase. Very well done. I'm hoping some people will take a look at it. Let us know the next meeting if you can keep track of how many people look at that. And just don't pay your friends a nickel to go look at it.
Can you put a link on your Facebook page?
Yeah.
All right. Anything else on buildings and grounds?
I don't believe there is anything right now.
Okay. First reading, alternative instruction policy. I think that's just in our, uh, books for, excuse me, our packets for review.
There was a typo in there.
Shh. Oh, and the policy, or on the agenda?
No.
The agenda's mine, the policy's yours.
Which is probably, should be probably.
Back that bus up. Do you, do you have a copy with you or?
No.
I'll look at it. It, it's possible. The reason that we have this policy in place or we're going to adopt this is we learned through, uh, some other checks and balances that we have to do for, was it accreditation or was it for our title? I can't remember what it was through, but I went to look at it to edit our policy and I'm like, we, we don't have one, so, um, I, therefore, I just said, well, we've got to put one together. So, I did a little bit of research, uh, with some of the local schools, the area schools that had something put together that way, so. It's, I mean, obviously, every policy is important, but this is one that needs to be in black and white. You have to have it for, um, it was through title, right?
Okay. We'll have, uh, that should be it for tonight. Our next meeting is Monday, March 8th, I believe. Is it all right, gentlemen, if we were to start that meeting as early as 6:00? Is that okay? Or do?
I don't know if I'm going to be here.
You might be gone that meeting anyway?
I doubt we can hold.
Okay. You okay, Aaron? Larry? Joel?
Yeah. If it works, I'll be here.
Okay. Let's go, March 8th, 6:00 PM is our next meeting. And so, other than that, can I have a motion to move into executive session for personnel? Thank you, Aaron. A second? Thank you, Marty. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Thank you, everybody, for coming. Thank you, Bearcat TV, for doing that again.